Okay, this meeting.
I'm on, uh, Russ.
Okay.
Who is it?
Pat Odion. You can't see me.
Okay.
Hi, Pat.
Okay, uh.
Hi.
Please, please do not talk unless the chair recognizes people. This meeting is being recorded by the town of Southwick. It is a Thursday, April ninth, two thousand twenty meeting. It's five o'clock. Those in attendance remotely are Mr. Fox, Mr. Moglan, Mr. DeeDee, and Mr. Steinhardt. And then other people are being managed through the moderator function under the Zoom platform by Mr. Moglan. Okay, you're now, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Thursday, April ninth, two thousand twenty. Let me read the following meeting notices pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, eighteen. In the Governor's March fifteen, two thousand twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at the, on the Office of the Attorney General's webpage. No person in attendance of members of the public will be permitted. The town will persevere to install conference call capabilities for other parties to listen and participate accordingly. If not possible, we will post on the town website an audio recording as soon as possible after the meeting. All right, I'd like to begin with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, before we begin, I just want to let you know that in, that script needs to change just a tad because we have adopted this technology that will allow us to allow for remote participation and observation. So for future postings, we can strike that part. We have made that, uh, technological installation so that we can have, uh, observation and participation in our meetings.
Uh, Mr., Mr., Mr.
Thank you, Doug. I'm going to ask the C A O to write up the appropriate language. And I'm gonna ask him to make the letters a little bit larger so that it's easier to read than this, uh, without a magnifying glass.
Yeah, ju- just as a matter of course, Mr. Chairman, the reason why I, I leave that language in there is in the event that there were to be a technology issue in the, um, uh, Zoom platform were to not work, then we've covered ourselves by letting people know that we would post it after the fact. So that's why I had done that. In fact, the other day's meeting, you know, was, uh, taken off of our recorder and that was already posted onto the webpage.
All right, very good. Doug, there is a little feedback noise. Are you hearing it?
I'm getting a little bit, so.
It's actually on Pat's line, so I have her muted right now, so Pat, take no offense, but there's some clicking on your line when about every ten or fifteen seconds or so.
Right, I'm not hearing it now.
We will unmute you when we get to the public comment portion of our meeting.
Which you could probably do that now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're open to public comments. This is an opportunity that anyone that is not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the Select Board, this would be your opportunity to do that. Is there anyone that would like to make a statement? I'd ask you, if you want to, please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone at this time?
Yes.
In your name?
Yes. Patricia Odion. I live at eleven White Street.
Good night.
Am I on?
Yeah.
You're on.
Okay. Uh, we have, uh, people living next door to us at nine White Street, uh, for the lake treatment. Uh, the, the man who's in charge of it or something uses the dock and lives there during the week and then goes home to Ashburnham on the weekend, uh, ignoring the stay-at-home order. And, um, we don't know who, who it is, you know, and whether they might have coronavirus that they're bringing. But what I wanted to say was, when the project ends, uh, the town will just figure, well, you know, it, it doesn't matter that, uh, there was somebody there for a few weeks. But there is a, a bylaw that forbids B and Bs, uh, and, uh, Art Lawler sent a letter to the owners of the, the property at nine White Street over a year ago telling them that they were not allowed by the town bylaws to run a B and B. And, uh, just la- last July, year ago, uh, July first, two thousand nineteen, the Governor of Massachusetts, uh, made a recommendation that, that's come out, uh, that all B and Bs need to be registered so that, uh, the, the state can collect their occupancy tax for the B and B. Now, I'm, I have not heard back from Art Lawler. Um, Harold wrote a letter, uh, about that, uh, you know, say, asking about the people next door. Anyway, I don't know whether they're registered or not, but there is a town bylaw that says, uh, people can't run a B and B in Southwick. Now, if we just ignore the people who are next door now on the lake treatment, then the owners will assume that they can go back to the way it was before, which was renting by the night, the week, or the month. And we had many, many, many different people coming in night after night. And, uh, as, as I said, the zoning officer sent a letter to the, the owner saying that that was not allowed. And we haven't had very much trouble with it since. But now that they're renting to the lake treatment people, they will be emboldened to go ahead and, uh, rent again and have us, uh, be in the same situation we were two years ago. Thank you.
All right, Pat. As you know, we don't have back and forth on, uh, public comments, but I'm gonna make this one exception that this matter has been referred to town council. And that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you. All right, uh, the first thing on the agenda is a COVID nineteen discussion and actions. Mr. Steinhardt, anything new?
Uh, well, let's see, uh, today, the, uh, the governor had a, um, a, um, press conference and he talked about the, uh, the different efforts that are going on in the state in terms of, uh, ramping up the medical support staff throughout the state to work at healthcare facilities and temporary, uh, field hospitals are being what's called stood up, that's the term for it. So there's been a lot of medical professionals that are being brought in and being credentialed and licensed and so forth. Um, insurance companies, uh, have been directed to cover all of the COVID nineteen costs for patients that are gonna be sent to these out-of-network locations, cause you won't be going to your normal in-network hospitals if you're sent to one of these field, uh, locations. Uh, he also updated people that, you know, typically there's maybe, um, you know, tens of thousands or, you know, several thousand to ten thousand unemployment claims, um, in a month. And now there was four hundred and seventy thousand of them, um, in three weeks. So the Division of Unemployment Assistance is already processing and paying up to two hundred and fifty thousand of those claims now. And they've added up, uh, six hundred more staff people to, to deal with that issue. Um, so that's one issue. And then in terms of our other stuff, we need to, um, I've sent you the information about the Southwick Town Code. The Finance Committee will be taking a concurrent action on Monday evening, and that is to approve an emergency waiver of any procurement regulations that may need to be suspended pursuant to, uh, chapter eight dash two of the Town Code related specifically for the COVID nineteen response.
Do I need a motion?
Uh, Doug Moglan will make that motion.
Joe DeeDee?
Joe DeeDee second.
All right, a roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglan, aye. Joe DeeDee, aye.
unanimous, thank you.
Okay, and then the next item I had sent you was the, uh, the, uh, formal vote constructed by Town Council to move the annual town meeting, uh, to June sixteenth, two thousand twenty, cause the election was under a different act of, of the law. So I have sent that and you've already taken a, um, um, a vote on that issue at your previous meeting, so I would be taking this formal vote and, um, um, having you also record it with a motion made and seconded in a roll call vote. And have you, have you read the contents of that order?
Has everybody read it or do you want me to read it?
Please go through it.
All right, annual town meeting, change of date pursuant to section twenty dash one, the code of the town of Southwick. The annual town meeting shall be held on the third Tuesday of May, starting at seven P M. The third Tuesday of May, two thousand twenty is May nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the Governor issued various orders regarding public gatherings and the legislature has enacted various laws that affect annual town meetings and municipal governance in general. Pursuant to chapter fifty-three of the Acts of two thousand twenty, annual town meetings are allowed to be rescheduled to be held on or before June thirtieth. Based upon the foregoing, the Select Board has determined that the annual town meeting shall be held on June sixteen, two thousand twenty, and a warrant for the annual town meeting shall be issued in accordance with all actual laws. You need a motion?
That would be Doug making it.
Thank you, Carl. Doug Moglan will make a motion to, uh, post to hold a annual town meeting on, uh, June sixteenth, nineteenth, sorry.
No, it's the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, that was right the first time, June sixteenth. Joe DeeDee second.
All right, a roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglan, aye. Joe DeeDee, aye.
All right, uh, those are the only things listed on the agenda.
Those were related to the COVID items.
I'm sorry?
That was items listed for COVID. If you look below it, you'll see all the minutes that we still have to accept.
Correct, correct. I was, I was getting to that, thank you. Uh, we need to take a motion to accept the minutes dated four, one, two thousand twenty, three, two, two thousand twenty, three, seven, two thousand twenty.
You looking for just an omnibus motion there?
Yep.
So moved. Joe DeeDee second.
Okay, a roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglan, aye. Joe DeeDee, aye.
Unanimous, thank you. All right, uh, dates to remember, we have the special election for State Senator on May nineteenth, it's a Tuesday. We have our local elections on June ninth, which is also a Tuesday, and then the third Tuesday in, uh, June would be our, uh, annual town meeting. We normally have a special town meeting a half hour before.
Right.
To, uh, clean up, uh, things pertaining to this fiscal period.
Right, that is correct, Mr. Chairman. At your last meeting, you went over all the potential, um, articles that could come in relating to that issue. And I believe one of the things we've, uh, determined since then is we probably may not have in, insufficient time, items related to zoning articles. Um, so I wanted to, um, mention to the board if it would still be, um, important to have the bylaw that Randy was going to develop for the stormwater duties to be undertaken by the D P W, which is a general bylaw, if that could be constructed and done that way. And then whenever we got to, so that that could be approved, the function could be moved from the zoning enforcement officer, um, over to the D P W under the stormwater coordinator, which is what the board had instructed to happen. But the first part of doing that was the deletion from the zoning bylaws. So I would still like the board to, um, authorize, uh, Town Council Begley to work with Randy for that general law, uh, bylaw. So Doug, what do you think about doing that, at least at, at this point?
I don't see any harm in it. I, I should probably reach out to the chair and see why they didn't, uh, cause they had stuff advertised that they missed the meetings for, so now they've gotta re, re, re-advertise cause they didn't even continue, correct?
Uh, that is true. They did not open them up and continue them, so you will have a legal ad expense for any of all, any of those pieces of legislation, whether it's the stormwater deletion, solar, um, issues, sign bylaws, all of those issues that we thought were gonna be addressed.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I don't know why they didn't use the leverage, the, at least to open or even just to continue the hearing until such a time as they were able to either meet via teleconference or in person. But here or there, that, that came and went, so they'll have to redo that. But I don't see any, any issue with having Begley continue to work on it because at some point they gotta get it on the books anyhow.
So.
Whether it's for this annual or a future meeting, it's gonna have to happen.
Right, well, that's separate from the zoning part. That's the town bylaw one that's directly under you. So it would, even if we adopted one and headed, um, accepted, we'd still be waiting in the future because it would conflict with the other one to remove the other one. But at least we would have the authority to have the D P W stormwater people handle that issue as opposed to the zoning enforcement officers. So do you wanna just put that on hold or would you like to have Town Council have that ready with Randy for?
We should have it ready, I don't, I don't know that.
For the annual, do you want it on the annual?
Sure, why not? And I don't see, I, I don't know that it, it probably has to be with corresponding legislation to pull it out of zoning because of the, the different voting requirements, but.
But, but actually, well, i- i- it, it was ideally gonna be done that way, but since the other board may not be meeting and posting meetings and posting hearings, that may not happen in a timely fashion. So this one would be the one that you could choose to operate under while the other one, which is redundant, could be repealed later on as an amended zoning bylaw deletion.
Correct, but my, my point and I, you know, my point is, is that if you adopt a local bylaw, the, um, the voting requirement for a local bylaw is lower than a zoning bylaw amendment. So I don't think you could actually put on a local bylaw that would take precedence over zoning. So the zoning one will override until the zoning one is repealed by an active town meeting.
Oh, I was not aware of that, I thought, so.
Just, just my thought, I don't know if that's true or not, but it just, the, the logic says that you need two-thirds of town meeting, a majority for a local, uh, for zoning versus local. So my guess is that you, they wouldn't allow that to, to, to subjugate, whatever the word is.
Yeah, yeah.
Take over a zoning thing.
Subordinate, to subordinate the other one.
Yeah, but I also think that if Planning Board hustles, they could actually get that done, cause I don't think that's gonna be controversial. So they could still advertise for the hearing, say, next week for two weeks, then have their hearing. Your town meeting is until June sixteenth, as long as the meeting's held and closed, you can still have that. You could have the, the public hearing even after the warrant is posted for.
That is, that is true, but obviously with the noticing, you know, the Secretary of State's and the A G's office will look at that, all of those noticing requirement steps. And if they're not gonna be meeting enough to have got through those legally required steps, then you would not be able to, um, submit all the corresponding documents that have to go through with that.
I don't know, too.
I, 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 I think that, yes.
Why don't we do two things? Doug's agreed to reach out to the Chairman of the Planning Board.
Okay.
And you could reach out to Begley. And then we can, between you and Doug and the Chairman of the Planning Board and Begley, develop a plan. And if it's possible, we go, and if it's not, we don't.
Okay.
They're gonna have to start meeting as much as they know, tech savvy or not tech savvy, whatever the reasoning is behind it. Planning Board's going to have to get up to speed. We still move on, things have to get done.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we leave it like that and see if we can't coordinate and see what's possible to do?
Okay.
All right, so is there any other things that you need to talk to us about, Mr. Steinhardt?
Uh, yeah, I can do that either under the old or the new business when I, when you get to that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then we'll go right to old business, under old business.
Okay, under old business, the Southwick Fire Station Project Masonry Subfile Bids came in today to the designer through our, what's called Bid Documents Online Platform, um, which was very timely that we were gonna use that for this bid process and in lieu of what's going on. It's great because that is in lieu of and, um, handles the same thing as an in-person bid opening. So that was a great timing for that. The general contractor bids are due next Thursday, April sixteenth. So what happens when filed sub-trades are, are filed, um, that gives about a week for potential general contractors to come along, see what all the results are, figure out which sub-trade person, vendor they wanna use, and then they incorporate it into their bids and then they, uh, add that person's number in with their own and their profit in overhead, and then we'll get finished bids next week so we can be examining them at a future meeting the week after.
Okay. So we'll put that on for next week. Anything else under old business?
Not for myself.
Mr. Moglan, old business?
No, I just had a question for Carl. That, the, the funding mechanism for that fire station is gonna be in the, in the annual, correct?
Uh, what, what has to happen is, yeah, you would, um, you already have a separate borrowing authorization for the design, which would also, which includes everything we've done now, as well as some of the bidding steps, and there would be enough to handle an amendment that will come in the future for you. If there is a, a, a bid that you award for construction, there'll be another phase of the designer to oversee the construction.
Understood.
And, and again, so that's that. So you're gonna have to do a separate borrowing authorization for the, um, the project. And that would be on the warrant.
Correct. My question around is, I think there was additional guidance on construction projects and the ability to do them right now, so we have to keep an eye on that.
Yep, the, the, all the protocols and, all the protocols that have been published recently that we have passed along to our other municipal departments that oversee construction contracts, including D P W have been given that. And the information that relates to that has also been given to the, um, the design firm Russo Bar that is overseeing this project.
Gotcha.
Joe, any old business?
Oh, sir.
All right, we're going to new business then, new business. Mr. Steinhardt?
Yes, um, the cell tower, um, for Liberty Lane, the special permit is going to be filed by the Attorneys for Verizon Wireless tomorrow. And, uh, that will be clocked in. It will go to the Planning Board there. Uh, Alan spoke to them today, so they're expecting it. And of course, that will, uh, follow the same, uh, process that the Governor has put in place under the emergency declaration, which will give them more time to take up the matter under the, uh, the normal, um, timeframes. So I just wanted to let you know, and that of course is, you've already signed an option and an arrangement for, um, that firm to put the tower up, and they just have to go through the Planning Board process.
Okay. Uh, any other new business?
Not for me, no.
Uh, Mr. Moglan, new business?
Um, I just wanna start tracking an item. I know we've been going back and, I've seen some emails back and forth from Pioneer Valley Planning, um, regarding availability of funds, um, that are coming either from the state or the feds to potentially, once we get through the Board of Health and some of the other issues that are facing the town, but there was, I noticed some of the other towns surrounding us are starting to look at, uh, small business loans, low interest rate loans or zero percent interest loans, um, to be able to try to support some of the small businesses that are getting just hammered by this right now. So I was wondering if that's something that we should be working with, uh, preliminarily start working with P V P P C or looking at how we could potentially do something similar to support some of the small businesses in our town.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have raised that issue with Erica Johnson, um, and the staff over there, so when the funds flow into the state of Massachusetts from the federal dollars and then they can, they can be available to be administered to local, smaller towns that are called entitled, uh, non-entitlement communities. So we have registered that as the, uh, main concern for the use of those funds for our community, so that we can support our local businesses.
Good, a very good point, Mr. Moglan.
Thank you.
So we will be tracking that. We, they, we have registered that as our number one priority for the use of those potential funds to be received and distributed if we were to get any, Mr. Moglan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeeDee, new business?
Uh, Doug took care of it.
Okay, uh, I did neglect under old business to mention, I reached out to the Superintendent, uh, Jen Willard and Mr. Presnel. Uh, they seem to, uh, wanna do anything they can do to, uh, help us. Uh, they certainly appreciate the situation and understand that we've, uh, I've pushed back our tax collection for, uh, thirty days to help out people. Uh, Steve is going to get back to me, he's the business manager, he wanted to go over everything with, with, uh, their regional accountant. And, uh, but he thought, you know, just off the cuff, that it was a workable plan that I had suggested, fifty percent, fifty percent, you know, so they're gonna get back to us, uh, uh, once they, uh, have the okay and have spoken to their, uh, regional school committee.
All right, I made, I made note of that, Mr. Chairman, in the minutes.
All right, so we'll see, uh, and, uh, once we have that, uh, I did, uh, tell Carl I, I, I'd like to, uh, do a, uh, some sort of news article, uh, talking about the situation, uh, encouraging people that can pay to pay and asking different financial institutions that are holding these escrow accounts if they couldn't pay, uh, by, uh, May first and help out the town.
Yeah, well, you, you are correct. They've already raised those funds from all the people that they, uh, charged and they're already sitting in the escrow accounts and any more money's coming in now presumably would be for a fall tax bill. So they do already have that money and they've already raised it from all their mortgage holders.
All right, so is there any problem with, uh, doing a, uh, news story on that?
No, but are, are we sure they're not paying? You know, a lot of times, good times, what we may say, I don't think it goes down to the bank tomorrow. I, I mean, have we heard from Michelle or, or?
Michelle is.
Holding back?
No, well, they're not, that, as generally, they, um, they don't, a lot of them sometimes will do it in the third or fourth week. They don't do it as soon as possible. And if you have an extension here that's going into June, even if they held the money to June, they're still holding somebody else's money and accruing more of it in their monthly mortgage payments. So it's that person's money, it's that person's interest, so they might as well be making the disbursements on time.
Yeah, I, I guess my question was, do you think they're not going to?
Uh, no, we, we don't know, w- we don't know firm or not, you know, once you offer an extension, you never know if somebody thinks they're gonna take advantage of it.
Yeah, I guess, a- as a whole, being a small business owner like some of us in the room, banks don't do nothing on time. I just can't picture them putting the brakes on, on that money, cause, right, once it's in the system, it's in the system. I mean, we have a computer guy on the board here, right? Once that's all jammed, unplugged in, I just can't see him hitting, stop right away. But yeah, definitely do an article, but you know what I mean? I just, God knows the banks don't do anything for us quick. Well, I, I also think, Joe, you're right, you're right, and I also think, depending on the banks, they're not gonna wanna micromanage. Right. Every different town's extension, they know, they probably plugged it into computer when they wrote the loan, when the, when the taxes are due in Southwick. And so when they get the bill, it gets keyed in and it, and they're gonna disperse it. So if it's like Bank of America who's got, you know, covers the entire country, they're not even probably. covers the entire country, they're not even probably aware that we offered an extension in our town cuz it's town by town, not even by the state. So
Yeah.
they're probably gonna pay it late like they normally do, but, you know, they're not paying attention to the extension.
Well, the, the other thing is, some of those escrow companies, they're companies that are like in other states and, and they just package everything up, so. Uh, maybe the, Russ is true, if it's a local bank, then they could do something locally, local credit unions, local banks, they would know about it. But a lot of those other escrow holding companies, they're major large companies that are third parties that handle hundreds of thousands of loans.
Sure, and so for millions even, and so they're not, they're, they're not even paying attention to our extension. This, I think this is more for people who are paying their own property taxes and, and, and excise taxes or what have you, that need to come in and pay them. We're trying to spread that out. One, for the financial relief, and two, to take some of the pressure off on Town Hall. I think we also, uh, Mr. Chairman, one other thing we need to do is to continue to work with Michelle to see if there's ways that we can actually more cost-effectively take electronic payments. Right now, we can do it, but the surcharge is quite high. If there's a way that we could start taking payments via computer or the mail or whatever, or not the mail, but electronically at a lower, a lower rate than the, I think it's 1.5% or something like that that we charge now, and I, don't quote me on that number. But where we could lower that rate, it might be more appealing people to, to do that. And then we could also offer more transactions online that way and take some of the friction out and having people come in, even dump stickers and stuff like that. If you could do that online and then we just mail them out, that's one less person coming into the, the treasurer clerk's office.
Well, I think we'll be looking at a bunch of those issues technologically going forward in the future.
Right, but I think we could start, not, maybe not today, not tomorrow, but certainly put that on a, on a radar, that that's, that's an objective that we wanna get to.
I think Carl's right, I think you're gonna see a lot of communities throughout, uh, the United States, throughout the world now, they're gonna be looking to do things a lot more electronically.
And I think as part of that, Russ, what's gonna happen is the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services may, may also come out with a bunch of reforms that will help treasure collectors and assessors and other departments be able to have this creativity that Doug is speaking to.
Correct. And going back to our previous discussion, uh, I was a little concerned to learn that Southwick isn't the center of the universe. And, uh, you know, so, thank you for educating me on that fact.
Could I add that we get a better picture of Russ? Today's picture of Russ looked like he was at a class reunion. Can we get him out in the field working or, you know, looking over pasture? Just not that picture, that was definitely an 80s picture.
Thank you, Mr. Diddy.
That's, that's, that's the, that's the Babson, that's the Babson College picture.
Yes, yes, yes.
At the reunion.
All right, the, uh, last thing I had under new business, it's just an FYI. I had a long chat with the, uh, mayor of Westfield today, our good friend, uh, uh, Mayor Humison. And, uh, he was checking to see how we were all doing, and we discussed, uh, different issues, uh, addressing both of our communities. Uh, uh, he certainly sends his best wishes to all of you, and I, uh, extended our best wishes to him and his family and to the city of Westfield. So with that, if there's nothing else, we are going to recess because we are scheduled, uh, to attend, uh, through, uh, Zoom, the Board of Health meeting. So I need a motion to recess until 6:00 PM.
And, and of course, that is on a separately posted Board of Health agenda.
Correct.
Which people can find online.
And, and if, and, and for myself, if I have issues, Doug, I'll be calling you.
So, I'll, I'll take that motion and accept the challenge.
All right.
I'll look at that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, thank you, and be safe till 6 o'clock.
Motion to recess, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.